...to order this meeting of the Gettysburg Area School District Board of Directors this Monday, Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg Area School District. Public comment is welcome and issues will be referred to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Please know that issues will not be debated in this public meeting. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contacting the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. Thank you. Ms. Collins, make note that all standing board members except for Mr. Williams are present. Mr. Williams is excused tonight. And just let you know that Mr. Williams had his surgery, it was successful, and he's recuperating well, but can't drive yet, so he's not able to go out and about, so. All right? Please stand before the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to our guests tonight. Now, you notice there are communications from any board members that they need to share. Okay? Citizens' participation. We have two speakers tonight. We have Lisa Spangler and Danielle Spangler, and they're going to address the board about lacrosse. Again, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Spangler, a taxpaying resident and mom of six, two of whom are Gettysburg Area High School students. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of my own son, the student athletes of our district, and our group of parent supporters. You may or not be aware of the recent push for lacrosse in our district, but as of now, you will be. We have been working hard for lacrosse since last March and are now at the point that a special budget request has been submitted for lacrosse. We know a decision has not yet been made as to whether it will be a recommended request or not, but I am here to give you a picture behind it all so that you will be better prepared when this request does come across your desk. Tonight, I want you to remember a few words. The first one is passion. At nearly every school-related meeting for parents, that word is proclaimed. Pursue your passion, live your passion, find your passion, and do it. But what if your school doesn't give you the opportunity to live that passion? That word is actually what put this whole movement into action. My ninth-grade son has a passion, a strong passion, and that passion is for lacrosse. Unfortunately, Gettysburg does not offer lacrosse. He had to play for New Oxford. Yet, when he hit the high school years and aged out of New Oxford's program, he was left with nowhere to play, nowhere to pursue his passion. The question entered my mind, how many other students are we failing in this way? Thus began my meetings with administration, US lacrosse, parents, students, and more. You can guess what we found. Many others have this passion. We have a gaping hole: passion. The second word I want you to remember is growth. When was the last time Gettysburg added a new sport? It has been so long that everyone I've asked, including administrators, no one seems to know. Other than, it's been decades. Decades. Did you know that Gettysburg is the only district in all Division II schools that does not offer lacrosse? Let me say that again. Gettysburg is the only district in all of Division II schools that does not offer lacrosse. That should not only shock and disappoint you, but it should propel you into action. This should not be. We need to grow our athletic program along with these other schools. Why? According to new data published by the Sports and Fitness Industry Association and the Aspen Institute, there continues to be a decline in high school participation in baseball, basketball, soccer, football, and wrestling. They are suffering severe losses in numbers. Yet lacrosse continues to be the fastest-growing sport in the United States. According to the Coach and Athletic Director Survey of High School Athletic Administrators, this is the sixth consecutive year that lacrosse has topped the list of most-added high school sports. Last year, thirty percent of athletic directors said they anticipated adding boys or girls lacrosse to their programs. Growth. And Gettysburg? Stagnant. Let's change that. Growth. Interest. That's our next word. Do we have the numbers to add such a sport? The answer is a resounding yes. At the high school alone, we have over fifty students interested in lacrosse. We have begun a lacrosse club and have a coach volunteering his time to work with our students, but they want more time to play, to learn, to grow. As great as it is that we have this club, there is a significant problem. We have no one to play against or scrimmage. Why? Because all other teams are PIA-A teams who have regular set games. There are no other club teams at this level. Instead, they're with schools who have embraced the sport and allowed for growth. Our students want to play games, not just run drills. What about the future interest of lacrosse? In the middle school alone, twenty-nine boys and thirty girls signed up as interested in playing. Interest is not just with students, though. We have parents who are supporting this movement and are actively involved, but it doesn't stop there either. We have community behind us. Members of our community, businesses, and individuals have contributed to this cause. Clearly, this is not merely a desire that one mom has for her son. Interest. Next, let's consider opportunity. We all know the huge benefit that participating in athletics and extracurriculars has on students. The spring season, which is lacrosse season, offers the least number of opportunities for our students. We need to provide another opportunity for them. In fact, track and field has become one big social event with an uncontrollable amount of kids in which very few students actually get to participate. Did you know it's to the point where our district does not even bus all the track and field athletes? They only bus the kids who are competing. So if there are thirty students who are in track to do the long jump event, but only three are competing, you have twenty-seven students just sitting. This is what track and field has become. We need to give students another opportunity so they're not just sitting. This would make some of the track numbers more reasonable and workable and will allow more students to participate in a competitive sport. Furthermore, did you know that we have students whose only sport is lacrosse? That's their sport. Thinking that we'd just be pulling kids away from other sports is a complete misconception. We would actually be reaching more students and have more students involved in an extracurricular by giving them this opportunity. Another aspect of opportunity relates to college scholarships. While it is possible to still receive a lacrosse scholarship without having a high school team, it's very difficult. My son is at a great disadvantage when it comes to lacrosse scholarship opportunities. Recruiters ask to see video footage from high school games. They want referrals from his high school coach and so on. Without any of this, he falls behind every other lacrosse athlete competing for scholarships. And by the way, lacrosse college scholarships are exploding around the entire country. Our students are missing out. Let's give our athletes a fair chance. Opportunity. Our next word is affordable. Yes, affordable. How can that be? Lacrosse, like some other sports, is a very personal sport in that players themselves purchase their own equipment. As I personally spoke with lacrosse families throughout surrounding districts, in every single case, the students themselves provided their own equipment. There may be a small number of pieces provided by the district in the event a student can't afford his own, but they are not typically used. Gettysburg offers other sports like golf, tennis, and field hockey in which students own their equipment. It's personal. With that said, when you see the dollar amount in the budget request, it does not accurately reflect the fact that most students will already have their own equipment. In addition, our parent advocates have been working on securing equipment donations. If equipment figures would be removed from the dollar amount, lacrosse would cost about as much as other sports with normal expenses like reps, coaches, and transportation. Furthermore, our group has been raising money and continues to raise money to offset the startup costs. We actually have a fundraising lacrosse clinic coming up in March, which will not only raise money for us, but also increase lacrosse awareness and interest. Affordable. The final word to write on your mind in bold is public. Who is behind special budget requests? Administrators. Administrators see a need or want an initiated plan for it. It isn't about what the parents want, what the students are asking for, or what the community is supporting. This request is definitively different. Athletic Director Ms. Casey Thurston has been amazing, working alongside us and supporting us. She wrote the special budget request, but this was not initiated by her. I went to her, students went to her, and she one-hundred percent jumped on board. This is a request being made by your very own students that you are called to serve. This is a request being made by taxpaying parents who pay the salaries in the district. This is a request being made by taxpaying residents who want to see our school grow and be among the ranks of other Division II schools. It is not driven by the administration. This is driven by your public, the very people who have entrusted their children to you and your decisions, and by the very students themselves. This is a most significant and important difference. How many parent meetings have been held in support of any other budget request you will see? None. How many student meetings have been held to bring any other special budget request to pass? None. How many fundraisers have been held to help raise money for any other special budget request? None. This is not driven by the administration, but by your public and your students. This should not be taken lightly. Public. So what am I asking of you? On behalf of our lacrosse athletes and the parents and community supporting them, I'm asking you to approve the special budget request for lacrosse for the next school year when it is put before you. Even if it is not recommended by Dr. Perrin, you can dispute that and actually stand with our students, parents, and community. At the very least, we are specifically asking that you allow our students to play a year of exhibition lacrosse with other schools in the PIA-A division for the 2019-20 school year. This can be done. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm always open to meet with any of you or answer any questions. So as you leave tonight, may these words resound through your mind: passion, growth, interest, opportunity, affordable, and public. I have notes for each of you for your future reference. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, next we have Daniel.
Hi, my name is Daniel Spangler, and I'm a ninth-grade student and play lacrosse. And lacrosse has been a great passion for me and opens many leadership opportunities for me and other students that play it. And it gives me a lot of conditioning and training for other sports like football that I play. And for me to play a sport like that in the summer slash spring when I'm not really doing anything else, keep me conditioned. So, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Board Committee reports.
I'm very excited to share that the Communications Committee meets tomorrow.
All right, we'll be there.
I also have a report. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee met. We discussed the format of draft special budget requests. We also looked at the five-year protect plan and an update that was made to the final column, and we also looked at the format of a chart showing the cost of the Gettysburg Area School District Virtual Academy in computers and to the cyber charter schools. So I want to emphasize, we looked at formats of two different documents that will be coming forward with the edits that were suggested by the committee. Our next meeting will be the third Thursday of February.
There is nothing from the Legislative Committee.
Okay. And Al, nothing to read?
No. We did not, the Policy Committee did not meet, but you do have on the agenda tonight for approval the calendar for next school year, and there was a number of stakeholders that had input into that, and we fully support it.
I just, also, there's an agenda item on the IU budget, which is a yearly thing that we, that each board has to approve. I sit on the IU board, as you know, and represent Gettysburg and upper Adams. The budget for this next coming year will actually be a reduction from last year, which was a reduction from the year before. So our share continues to go down. I think we will see, it's a little over fifteen hundred dollars less than we paid last year. And one of the things I listened to in interest was from the business manager at the IU that their goal may be down the road in the near future is to not charge any schools those fees for the budget. So we'll cross our fingers and hope that maybe we reach that point that the IU can be self-sufficient and not have to reach out to the districts in the county. Also, to keep you updated, there is a new IU director. The board approved Dr. West, who's coming in from Nebraska the end of April. In the meantime, yeah, Dr. Zensenek is filling in as the interim director, and Jody, who was there, Dr. Nice, has retired. So right now, we just have an interim executive director, and I think he's off and running. He's already put out a weekly report of what he's done the first week there, so I think things are moving along at the IU. So I'll keep you posted on that and looking forward to having Dr. West come into Adams County and work in Franklin Counties. Okay? Turn it over to Dr. Perrin for building program information.
Good evening. I want to announce at a public meeting that we were awarded a PA Smart targeted K-12 Computer Science Grant. We learned that last week, so it's targeting our middle school students, specifically an integrated approach of teaching computer science. So those teachers selected will start their training this spring, and that will be implemented next fall. So we're excited about working with our IU as a partner for that training and rolling this out with our students at the middle level. We are working on kindergarten registration details, just to get the dates out there, March 12th from nine to five, and the 13th from 12 to eight. So we are going to get all of that announced and applications out to our feeder preschools so that we can get pretty good turnout on that day, so we have a fairly accurate counting for the kindergarteners coming to school in the 19-20 school year. So, thank you.
Dr. Lee, any estimates on number of registers, or is that kindergarteners, or is that just always whatever it is?
Always whatever, but we typically get around a hundred at registration.
So we don't see like an influx or a reduction?
No, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you. Anything else?
At your places you have, Stand by Nessa's audit report, you also have an update of the handout that they provided in their presentation to the board earlier. They just updated that manual for any final minor changes that were made. So if you read through their report, if you have any questions, please let me know. We'll be posting it on the web, and there'll be an advertisement showing that it's available for public review as well. If you've seen that.
Right. One second. You indicated just now that this is what they already gave us. Go ahead. The changes. Is that highlighted, I mean, is there any way to direct?
There's nothing material in there as far as changes. The report that they had was virtually complete.
Okay. Thanks, Brad.
Okay, and thank, I want to thank on behalf of the board, the business office, for the work that you put into getting the audit done in a timely manner and a professional manner, so appreciate that.
That's Friday. We made up our first snow day. I think that's the last snow day for the year.
Yeah.
The rest of the stuff is going to be above the term, like. We're still embarking on a couple of, we tried to do two parent evenings this year. We did one back in early December with regards to social media, and we're trying to set up another one now. I believe the date is going to be April 17th, and the topic is going to be anxiety and depression in students. You know, we see a lot more of that at younger and younger ages. So contracting with a gentleman from Center County, he writes some books in mindfulness, those types of things, and he's really great at kind of taking and providing parents with information in terms of, here are some things that you might see with regards to anxiety and depression in students. Here's how that translates into school, and then here are the kind of things parents can do to address those concerns if they're there. So we'll continue to do the planning. Andrew Robinson and John Lewis have been the two folks that have been working with me on the parent evenings. So once we have everything nailed down and it's definite, we'll get information out to parents so they can fill out their calendar by the time. And spoke to Idet Groff on Monday during the holidays, and she was slated to be here Thursday at 5:30 for dinner, followed by an administrative conference for board development. And so if anybody has any scheduling issues, please let Carlos know by, if you can, by 5 o'clock tomorrow, in case we don't have the critical mass of board members, we might need to look at rescheduling so that we're taking full advantage of what she has to offer as a group. And then lastly, I just wanted to say as a part of January being board recognition law, just wanted to thank, take the time to recognize our Board of School Directors for their service and commitment to our district community and to the experiences of our students. You know, school board is definitely a service, a brilliant endeavor. It's an uncompensated elected position, which the benefits and rewards are certainly intrinsic for each board member, but certainly invaluable for the work that we do in the district each day. The Gettysburg Area School District admin, the faculty, staff, students and their families appreciate what each of you do on a daily basis in service to our mission. I've had board members in my family. I watched it from afar, been up close, and a lot goes into that that someone might not necessarily see on a weekly basis. So, you know, we're fortunate that you all are here, working on behalf of our kids. And I'd like to thank Jane Collins for providing the cake this evening. I didn't grab a piece yet. Say that for later. Thanks, Jane. And we have certificates for each of you, and then at the end of the meeting, before we go into executive session, and you'd like to get a photo for everybody.
Thank you.
You. You. Okay. Whittle without the cake, just. We want that whittle without the cake.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My pleasure.
That's all. All right.
I'd like to ask a question of Dr. Perrin.
Yes.
I'll wait till he's back to share. And I will say, I'll take this opportunity to say that it really truly is an honor to serve our district in this capacity, and I'm very grateful for the others who put me here. Dr. Perrin, I want to go back to the April parent event that you're planning and say thank you for selecting that particular topic. I'm aware, as we all are, that we've got a school-based mental health initiative in process. I wonder if you could update us on where we are with that?
Sure, I can have, I mean, I can have John Lewis provide a more detailed update to the board, but what was, what we tried to do this year, span this year, really was participation of outside agencies to be able to provide school-based mental health to students while at school. A lot of the, a lot of the issues for families become scheduling those, scheduling those sessions, so being able to do that at school and then kind of expanding those professionals sitting on our SAT, student assistance teams in our schools, providing, providing that support as well. And a lot of those, a lot of those things were put in place, not just for the mental health piece of it and how the mental health piece of it supports overall learning, but if you go back to last year's conversations that every district was having regarding safety, you know, the number-one proactive way of dealing with safety is student relationships and making sure that when kids are struggling, that there's somebody that's able to recognize that and put supports in place so that we can address that as quickly as possible. So whenever the administrative team got together this summer at their retreat and discussed possible topics, the two that kind of rose to the top very, very quickly that they were seeing in their schools were, A, parents struggling with kind of navigating the whole social media world with their students in terms of, you know, how, to what degree, how to look at it, how not to look at it, you know, those types of things. But the other piece was just, we're seeing more and more students at younger and younger ages with, you know, anxiety, depression, whatever the case may be. So, but those are the kind of things that we're trying to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to our business items that need board action tonight. We'll start with personnel, item 9.12 and including item 9.7.
So, again?
Discussion. During none, we'll take the vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now, we turn to item 12, policy. There are two items. First, we have the item 12.1, the 2019-2020 school calendar, entertainment motion to approve.
Thank you for a couple, yeah.
Yep. I figured, about taking them separately.
All right, for the school calendar, out of curiosity, how is this figure of 180 instruction days turned?
I'm following a new school code.
Thank you.
Yep.
And for early separation, I wondered this, frankly, last year, will be voted as something similar as well. So what if any school resources are available to these individuals post early separation?
It's the graduates, so the same, whatever we would provide to a graduate of Gettysburg Area School District, we would provide to them.
Okay, so really, just their ability then to participate in the graduation ceremony?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I was curious, the terminology of early separation rather than early graduation, I'm used to most districts calling it early graduation, but it really is, they've met the requirements, really.
So these are early graduates that have met the criteria?
Most of these kids will probably be taking a college course or a preparatory course and things like that.
I'm sure each case is probably nearly different, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so right now we have item 12.1, the school calendar. For any more discussion? All right. Alice?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item 12.2, the early student separation, graduation, whatever you want to call that.
Some.
Ten seconds.
Any more discussion? All right. Alice?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll move on to business finance. Item 17.1, the Lincoln Intermediate Unit Number 12 budget.
Some.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm just, Carlos, I know you mentioned their operating expenses are actually, there's been a reduction.
For free bar district to pay, yes.
In the way of their services, I guess, do they, they make that up or they compensate for that in what they charge for their services, I guess? I'm just wondering how much inflationary, how much inflation is in that area or has that been pretty level?
I would say it's, you could probably answer it better than I can.
I will be abstaining from that vote, so just to note to me, but it's the departments that use the district of holding, as it's referred to, have made an easier effort to try to generate revenue in other ways. That could be through obtaining grants, that could also be for purchased services that may not be a part of what we would refer to as complementary or that are paid through with the holding services.
Dr. Perrin, how, how many intermediate unit classes do we currently house in the district? Are you aware of the topic here?
I'll pop ahead, I know that it varies in a given, you know, in a given year. That can shift depending upon needs of students, population around, around the IU, those kinds of things.
And are we, are we in compliance with their fair share and whatnot? We're in good shape that way?
And just to point out, this is what we're voting against, the operational budget.
Right.
This is not their special, they have many other budgets.
Right.
Which the IU board approves, but this is not this, where the service charges would come out of that budget. This is just operating the IU. Okay? All right, any other discussion?
I was curious about the educational services component of it. I noticed that that was the biggest increase in percentage of what would be being spent and it had noted a staff turnover that was causing that maybe big difference from last year to this year. I'm just curious what, what that is helping fund, like educational services, meaning the ways in which they're engaging with the schools in this area? Potentially operating more programs and things like that?
Professional development.
Professional, yeah.
Also, in, for that budget, it's professional development. For other parts of educational services is the services provided to school districts who need ESL teachers.
Right.
I care teachers, but it could maybe be professional development.
For the new staff numbers coming in, I'm worried.
For any.
Right.
Any staff, it could be at the superintendent level, it could be at the assistant superintendent, principal, teacher level and so forth.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion questions? All right. Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Carrie?
I'm saying.
Alice?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, item 17.2, the Act One budget resolution.
Some.
Second. Discussion.
Yes. All right. Clearly, we are excellent stewards of taxpayers' dollars, but I have some questions about this so I can be a more informed voter on the resolution. Thanks to Brad and his team, I now know that Act One provides for school districts to receive income from statewide gambling. I did not realize that, but thank you and I mean that sincerely. What amount did our district receive last fiscal year?
Yeah, one of the, one of the handouts, I think, is a list of revenues from the board agenda and I'll pop my head, it's line 7340.
I didn't notice it there.
It's about 1.1 million, I think, of revenue, but that's used to basically mitigate local real estate tax for people.
Okay.
To be clear, it's not a revenue of the district, it's a pass-through that comes from the state and the district passes it on to taxpayers. So nothing from it can be utilized in the district. If the total revenue, the hill shape line 7340 is Dr. Perrin's, it's about 1.1 million and it's done that since the beginning.
Okay. All right, thanks. In order to receive this pass-through, must we agree not to raise taxes beyond the index? Is that, okay, so they're now buried to each other. And then my last question really, how does passing this resolution, so agreeing that under no circumstances will we raise taxes beyond the index, how does it limit our capability to meet the needs of our district?
And so we, so we have a, we have a base index or a tactical index this year of 2.3. So by passing the resolution, we're basically saying that the ceiling or the maximums of which we will raise taxes this year is 2.3 percent. By passing that resolution, we can take advantage of some exceptions that might be available. So prior to making this recommendation, the business office runs some numbers in terms of what those exceptions would equal. And for us, it turns out it'd be about $8,000 in a $65 million budget. So really, we're talking about like 0.01 percent. So if, if we went a different direction versus what I'm recommending, so at the end of the day, you might be able to go to 2.31 percent instead of 2.3 percent, we're saying the $8,000 isn't, we'll figure that out through the budgeting process.
But, but I would add, to formality, we sat here last year through a budget process, we've all had a preliminary budget. We all should be well aware that we're not looking at a tax increase in the taxpayers at 2 percent. So therefore, given, adding them two together, the benefits, I'll weigh anything anyway by not taking it. I mean, it's absurd, we're not going to do that to begin with. We've put ourselves in that position where we don't have to do it.
So if it were, you know, if you, say it was going to be $8,000 available through, through exceptions, if there are not unknowns at this time, at this time of year, there are boards that take that, don't pass the resolution just in case something happens with the state down the road and those kinds of things that have, that have a significant impact on the budget. But they're not really available to us this year, so the recommendation is just to pass the resolution.
Well, thank you for answering my question.
Sure.
Any other questions concerning the resolution? Right here, none will take the vote, the resolution. Jim?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
No, I mean, wait, sorry.
That's right.
Wow, where am I tonight? I vote yes.
Okay.
My apologies.
Carrie?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next item is the information item concerning the preliminary budget, side 17.3. And you had some, we have some handouts right now?
Yeah, to go through, just go through some, some slides with you. And Andrew's gonna, Andrew's gonna cue those up. I'm gonna skip the information that I covered on January 7th just to make this more productive and stuff.
Appreciate that.
You got it. So it's part of the, it's part of the process, and this is a yearly process, obviously, we're at a point in the year where most of what we're dealing with are projections to the best of our ability, you know, really. And so throughout this semester, then, some of the unknowns become knowns and the accuracy increases as we get closer to, to May and June, whenever we pass the final budget. So what we will continue to do, obviously, is as those things become, as these variables become known, again, the variables that we're looking at in all this information, especially the ones that, that deal with some of the expenditures are really general projections. We don't know what's going to happen with the state budget yet. Our administrators and budget heads are still working with their departments and creating budgets. So once we know those things, this is going to be a whole lot more accurate. Next slide, Andrew, thank you. This is, as a, this is a quick reminder, pretty much the whole presentation from January 7th is that slide. Those were just a reminder of some of the things that we saw savings with last year that we're not going to see savings with this year as they return back to either where they were in terms of funding or back to a, a curve where they will continue to increase over time. So again, totaled up, that's around $1.2 million difference between working on the current year's budget versus working on next year's budget. Most of those, you can see, are really expenditures. Staffing attrition, that'll to, to be determined depending upon how many staff retire, resign, those types of things. There's some attritional savings whenever you hire, hire folks after folks, after folks leave in some way or another. Next slide, Andrew. So from the handouts that were online, projecting a total revenue increase of about 3 percent. And one of the changes we made from last year, and will continue to monitor and look at, last year, if you recall, we increased the local tax collection rate estimate from 94.9 to 95.1. And just given the data that we're seeing in our collection rate, we're going to be basing this budget on assuming that we're collecting 95.3 percent of local revenue. So one of the reasons we're doing that is, as I mentioned last year, we're trying to get as accurate as we can in terms of predicting revenues on a, you know, on a yearly basis. So we, we'll keep raising it to the point where we're comfortable, we never want to overshoot that number because that, that's bad in the wrong direction, that happens. So we want to be as accurate as we can while still, while still being responsible. And we'll update that number if we find that through this, through the next couple of months, we're receiving information from the tax office that we just believe that. But, so we're basing some of these projections on 95.3 percent collection rate. Andrew, next slide, please. So expenditure, the projected expenditure is 5.1 percent. A lot of those are due to the, the first slide that I showed you in terms of some of those things increases, increasing. This obviously assumes increased expenditures for contracts and agreements which grow on a yearly basis based on what was negotiated, public bargaining agreements, those types of things. And it assumes those increases from the previous slides and it assumes continued support of the five-year technology plan, which was approved as a five-year plan last year. This budget, or the numbers that you're seeing currently, provide for about $240,000 of money for possible special budget requests that come down the line. Last year, we provided more money for SBRs, as we call them, because we were seeing some savings in some of those other areas for that year. So we, we had more SBRs last year. So we, we would, as part of the process, when I talk about next steps, try to talk about how that plays in moving forward. Next slide, Andrew. So the unassigned fund balance, the audit that we just recently experienced, the unassigned fund balance was about $12.9 million. Of that $12.9 million, 3.3 of that was used to balance the current fiscal year budget. And so that takes that to about 9 million, 9.5 million. So board policy in terms of where we want to keep our unassigned fund balance is usually 0.6 and 8 percent of our, of our total operating, total operating budget. And as you can see from, from the handouts, we would, you know, if everything were to stay exactly like those really rough numbers, we'd be using a whole lot of fund balance to balance the budget. But again, those aren't, those aren't accurate until we move through the process of doing building budgets and, and those types of things. So, next slide, Andrew. So the, the three things that we're going to be working on really, obviously, right now as we speak, district budget heads or administrators need to work on their respective budgets, whether it be at a programmatic level or a building level. And then, once that's finished, each budget head meets with cabinet to review their budgets and requests. As a reminder, cabinet is basically myself, Brad Hunt, Chris Lay, and Tim McCondon. And those will, and those folks will, will meet with us. And then that way, we can ask some questions, look at some, you know, look, look at some areas. And then these variables be then be incorporated into future budget presentations for the board as further fiscal variables are refined. It's really kind of a refining process that helps us work towards, you know, a final budget. So, you know, I would, I would be looking at either late March or, I think late March is probably a safe bet, or early April, and maybe doing a board work session just specifically on budget. So it's not a piece of a larger board meeting that takes up a larger period of time. So that's when we would say like, you know, here's, here's what we have as it's refined to this point, you know, in March. Here's a list of all the SBRs, special budget requests we've received, not prioritized or anything, just here they, you know, here they are. And then I would come to you all, you know, for a final budget saying, here's my recommendation, given all of these, given all these variables kind of playing, playing together. So that's really what we're looking at. It is, you know, it's pretty, pretty early in the process this time of year, but just kind of wanted to continue to paint a picture. So what we do then is, Tom continues to put the information up on the website. So if folks want to follow along at home, they can just, they can, they can look at the slideshow, they can look at the information and we go from there. Questions at this point?
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Jason, the fund balance worksheet that you, we have as an attachment.
Yeah.
Again, I think it's somewhere here. We are looking at to balance the 1920 budget, we're anticipating using almost $5 million of fund balance to do that.
It won't, but my goal is not to be there, that's just where things are at right now and we work towards those things, yeah.
I guess the governor is going to present his budget February 5th, I think I read that. And I'm hearing rumors that we might get a little more special ed subsidy than in the past. And I think they're going to focus a little more on like they have been on subsidizing preschool activities and things like that. So we'll know more within the next few weeks, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, our, our hope is that if the, if the governor chooses to infuse more money into public schools, that they do it in base subsidy and not through.
Right.
Odd grants and, and those kinds of things.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just, when I look at that number of how much possibly we may have to use in the fund balance to balance our budget, that's a little scary, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, you know, our goal obviously is not to be there, that's just kind of what it is.
Dr. Perrin, could you remind us what the tax increase was for the current budget that we're in?
0.86 percent. Sorry.
And it, it is wrapped, just want to keep stressing that. When you look at the unassigned fund balance worksheet, it has on there, you know, using the maximum allowed a tax increase, other places where, besides the governor's budget, where there might be a way to close the difference between expenses and. where there might be a way to close the difference between expenses and revenues. I heard you mention the special budget request. That's one area that you've already brought down, is maybe there or in the other places?
We would look at everything every year. So it's almost like, you almost kind of start over each, you know, each year in front of say, missions here, goals are here, you know, where the programs meet that goal and then, you know, kind of moving forward. We look at how the budget, I guess the words, performed the previous year because we look at what we budgeted, say, the previous year, and we look at actuals. We can see where we might have over budgeted or those kind of things. So we can, we can move some of those numbers around if we're pretty confident that one of those numbers is overshot, you know, those kind of things.
So you don't do zero-based budgeting?
No, they don't come in and ask for all of it all over again. We take a look, what we did last year, if you recall, is all of budget heads utilized 16, 17 actuals to build their 18, 19 budgets because we knew that those were actual expenditures in 16, 17. And those then became the targets of 18, 19. So what we're doing this year is, we're giving them the same target. So whatever the target was in 18, 19, that's your target this year. And we have conversations because there might be some folks that say, hey, we had this new thing that we don't need next year that we had this year, so we can drop $10,000. But another principal might come and say, as you know, we have this next year that's going to cost. So we have those individual conversations. We get the number two there, where the cabinet's meeting with individual budget heads.
Some of the biggest factors that we're concerned about, who we're going to have to practice, which develop this budget, charter school, special ed costs, and attrition. When we develop these estimates that you have before you, we use broad brush trending heights analysis. So if special ed, IU contract cost had increased 3% over 2019, then we use that number. What we're working with now with all the department heads is they're putting together specific requests based on that. It's not, certainly it's not a textbook zero-based budgeting process. We don't ask them to justify renewing the contract that maintains the elevators according to law. That's put in there. But they've given constraints to work within so that they know that we're not going to spend money anywhere because somebody might want it. So they are working on prioritizing, living within those constraints. And then, as I said, the wild parts will be where the charter school enrollments go, where the special ed contract costs go, and maybe to those groups through the feedback.
And those parts about the special ed costs and the charter school costs are factored in broadly right now, but that's what will be more specific as well in late March.
We'd act as, we'd definitely act as we can.
All right, we have under 18, finance report, item 18.1, we have to pay bills.
In seconds.
Any discussion? All right, here we go, now, take a vote now.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yeah.
Carrie.
Yes.
Alice.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That concludes all our items for action tonight, I believe. And now we have some items, we go to the order.
Actually, I do have, I have two items here. I want to follow up on our speaker, just in terms of the board here. Under the SBR, and I don't recall from last year, so it may be a redundant question or maybe one that I should know. She had mentioned an SBR, I'll just quote, misquote you. What I'd like to see, and if it's possible, and I don't know if we already do that, is when we get an SBR, and I'll use this one to illustrate an example. Can we get a well-rounded viewpoint from what, with the recommendation? In other words, if the administration would recommend that in this particular SBR, I'm using that just as an example, that we would not be in a position to favor that in a recommendation. Can we get why we're not in favor? In other words, can we get, in other words, the day of the meeting, getting the motion out there without any supplemental information? And we may get that.
Yeah, we definitely will put in a position where you're seeing it and loading on it in multiple conversations. Probably, then we start with a, we start with a work session in late March and then we probably see it three or four times before voting on it.
And I didn't recall, and I'm using this one, but this is the one where there's a couple moving parts as I was listening to this. And it's not just someone, and I appreciate that, who's very supportive is probably a light word, but I like to hear the whole picture.
Sure.
From the position of the administrator.
Sure, we have Casey here as part of that.
I would recommend others.
Thanks.
And then the last thing I would have, and we're going to go in the order, is actually a personal to a degree. Dr. Parent sent out an email, I just want to publicly recognize the passing of one of the teachers, Walden. 30 years with the district, but on a personal level. And talking to Dr. Parent the other day, kind of up the thinking. You never know where a teacher touches one of these students' lives. And Mr. Walden was one of those teachers that touched my son's life. So he gravitated to him, they had a bond. And, you know, we lost a teacher, 30 years to the service. So, just want to recognize him publicly for not only his service, but what he's done for my family. Thank you.
Anything else, we go to the order?
Yes, I do, I have two things, thank you. I'd like to circle back to a discussion we began having, I guess, back in early December, maybe late November. We were discussing the decision that occurred, I think, before any of our time, to eliminate the general music teacher position in the middle school. And we had learned that with the decision to eliminate that position, when the then teacher left the district for other opportunities, the decision was made to eliminate the position. But limiting that position led to the creation of 2.5 positions at the middle school. I'd like to know what those positions are.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you go back, obviously that occurs every school year. There are some that are added and some that are not replaced. So I think that given here, and doing some research because it was prior to my time and prior to the current principal time, I think that there was a halftime ESL teacher that was added at middle level at that point. There was a social studies position that was added at middle level at that point. There was a special education classroom that was added at that point. And I think that year, what I found in doing some research also was that a English position was, from my high school, was utilized at middle level as well. So, I think it was two and a half positions because special ed position, I believe, was an IU classroom that was converted into a district.
If I may add on that, if I don't, I don't want to overstep my bounds, but we met with Ms. Herb last year and she went into great detail of this long-range plan that she's proposing, attempting to set up at the middle school. We gave her our backing to allow her to get back to us. And at this point, I know we had somebody come in and speak, but that person's come to us should actually be Ms. Herb through you or through Dr. Lay in that recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, probably.
And I always say that because I look back through that and that was, God was an elegant speaker and he may be spot on on everything, but I just, I don't want to undercut or go that direction on Ms. Herb because I don't know where she's at in her overall process.
I mean, every year is part of, as part of the budgeting process, we do that in all buildings. So if Nancy had something that she was trying to do at her building that she currently didn't have the resources for, and she would bring that forward as, you know, as a request just like the other budget heads would from, you know, from around the district. So we'll take a look at, we take a look almost on a yearly basis. I think like that situation that Kathleen is talking about is specific to that fiscal year. So I think it's, you know, 15, 16 going into 16, 17. So if you go back to 12, 13 going into 13, 14, you might see two positions that, that were utilized by school. So it's a yearly kind of thing in public schools in terms of how staffing's either attributed or repurposed for other needs in other areas, you know, throughout the, you know, throughout the district.
I think that was my, we don't know what she, what repurposed or what her goals were when she addressed us. And I'd like to give her an opportunity to, if she thinks, what she thinks best for us to consider first.
Yeah, we'd bring any recommendations forward to you as part of the budget process, absolutely.
And I'll also say to, kind of taking that idea and comment about public comment, I really appreciate people like Ms. Bangler coming out, and that was Dr. Talbot, speaking about the music position and really other community members who come and share their opinions frankly with us and their insights. We can't, we can't necessarily be all things to all people, that's true, but I think it really helps us keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening among the people who would like to be here. And I appreciate, I appreciate it. All right, the other thing I'd like to do, I'd like to make a motion to consider reinstating a curriculum committee as a committee function of this board. So I want to be clear, the motion is not to reinstate the committee, but it's that we consider reinstating a curriculum committee. Second.
So we've had a motion to look at adding a board committee on curriculum. And it's been seconded, it's a discussion.
Well, then I would start a discussion, and I don't know if it's a good or a bad idea, but I don't want to put something on here. Can we table that, I would suggest, and allow something to come out to the board members on what the purpose is, what the goals of that is of this committee and how it's going to serve to better the district and to the board? I mean, I'm not saying it's not, but I wasn't part of any other discussion to know if we actually need to have a committee, and I don't want to really put a vote out there.
So this is to consider, this is just to consider, yes.
The motion is to consider, which, what do you mean?
Yeah.
To gather information whether or not we should create it.
So if we
That's the way I see the motion.
And we would answer those questions.
I think Thursday night with Idet and our board retreat would be an perfect opportunity to have some discussion regarding that and some other issues I think that many of us might have. And again, because we've got a number of new people here, I think it would be great if, hopefully, we'll get the critical mass of our
We wouldn't be able to discuss.
Long as we're not breaking any sunshine laws.
You wouldn't be discussing any substantive issues or not be deliberated.
Right, with Idet, we'd be talking about our interactions and professional development. We wouldn't be able to put any agenda items on that meeting. But I will share a little bit about, in terms of, I mean, this is my second year certainly in the district. So, you know, you start to, the longer you're there, the more conversations you start having about more detailed kind of things. And, you know, Chris Lay and I have had conversations with district administrators about putting kind of just a formalized curriculum cycle in place so that over a five or six-year period, you're looking, you're really kind of looking K-12 at every department so that really nothing hasn't been looked. You don't get to a point where 15 years down the road at some point, well, we haven't looked in social studies in a while, let's look at social studies. So if we have a, if we have a process that continues to look and evaluate at those things, I think it's done for a variety of reasons. One is the resources available to us to support our teaching and learning change over time. So if we can make sure that we're putting the best resources in the hands of our teachers in the process, I think that's helpful. You know, also enables us to be a little bit agile in terms of dealing with unfunded mandates from the state in terms of things that they might require in terms of, whether it be PA, you know, PA core or whatever, they might be coming down the pike. So I think that sometime this spring, we would be able to kind of bring a draft cycle before you to say, here's kind of what we're looking at, kind of long-term, so that, because what that enables you to do too is you have a cycle in place you're able to then to not have to, like all of a sudden, something like math program. It's like, well, no, that's in two years. So you stick to your cycle over a period of time. And it's worked in districts that I've been in in the past, and then Chris has had experience with it as well. So outside of whatever the board decides to do with the committee, those are the plans of adminis, that's the plan in terms of administration with regards to curriculum type movement forward.
I just wanted to throw in on lacrosse issue. I'm a very strong advocate for lacrosse. I've brought up in the country, the Mohawk Indians, lacrosse is a way of life. It's from a point of view of sports, it's one of the two sports I see that is a continuous action sport, as in do something, wait, do something, wait. All right, but we have this motion on the
Then it must be my confusion because I, are we going to, are we voting to put together some committee to determine whether or not we need to have a committee? I mean, I'm just confused before I put a vote here. Because we're going to explore, but we're not sure. Can I offer a solution? Would it not go back to you, Mr. President, to see if two members of the board can present something to us and by talking with Dr. Parent and Dr. Lay as to see whether or not we actually need to have a committee to do that? I mean, I'm
I think
Made the motion, and there was a second, does that suit your needs?
Yeah, I think what I'm interested in, in addition to what Jason's talking about, is getting some information perhaps about what the, how that role functioned in the past. I know you had talked a little bit about how that used to exist and then was taken away for various reasons, but I think having a little bit more information about what that looked like.
Dr. Lay, would you like to just maybe put some new board members, this is what, I think it was in two years that was, well, not added curriculum committee, has it been two years or three years or?
It's not been more than two.
Two, yeah. It's been recent, maybe it's only one year, but Maybe if you could just share with, sort of, why it was sort of decided to
And that was the chair of the committee who recommended it.
Yes.
Bill.
Mr. Hewitt.
Hewitt. Todd Warner was on the committee also. We would just have meetings where we weren't bringing forth new curriculum for review or resource procurement for review. So when we have revisions, we would do a board presentation or if there's a resource to be approved, it's in the, I go to Tam, she puts it on the agenda, we make it available for people to look at first as an information item and then go on. So we felt like we were able to give the information to the full board and therefore there wasn't a need for us that were committing to look at things.
Whatever discussion items were at, what happened in the full board meeting.
Right.
I guess my other question for you is, talking about presenting that information about the cycles of curriculum and how that's kind of going through would be important for us to kind of know, I guess, what is coming up? And I think that was what you were suggesting bringing to us.
Right.
Okay.
I think it'd be good to have a cycle in place because at some point, you know, Chris Lay and I might leave, so it's good to have some, so it's good to have someone that's able to say, oh, they're on math, so next year's, like, it's good to have something that's not people-dependent. So it's, so it becomes institutionalized, almost, almost in a way.
That is not something that currently exists, but you're interested in implementing, okay? Or working on implementing.
We're working on implement, yeah. It's more, it's more than an interest at this point, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I would like to see what you put together and share with us in the couple of ones that have projected out there that will happen. I think that that's a good place to start, so we have some kind of framework of what you're looking at and we have more information then to make educated decisions related to the board.
Sure. So given the information that Dr. Lay and I So given the information that Dr. Lay and Dr. Perrin just shared to you that made the motion second, would you be okay, would you withdraw the motion, knowing that this is going to occur and come down into the road? And that way, we don't have to necessarily go through a vote? My, that could be withdrawn, is that correct?
Yes, okay. But the second has to withdraw as well.
Right, that's why I asked both of them. If not, then we don't do a vote.
Well, if, and, and this, this conversation, it maybe could have happened in a different format, but perhaps the person who seconded my motion would partner with me on gathering more data, information, et cetera. And if we choose to pass the motion, which really was simply that we would look into reinstating a curriculum committee, then Ms. Broadway and I could come back with a motion to in fact reinstate the committee.
If you're Yeah, I am willing to do that. I think I would still like to look into that option. I understand it's a little strange to vote on a, on a process of looking into it, but I feel like that gives us a way to do that.
So
Yeah.
Do I hear you withdrawing your motion and just moving forward with the two of you volunteering? Sounds like you both volunteered to bring information back to the board.
Do that without a motion, then sure.
Are you okay?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, board, we have Alice, Kathleen are going to spearhead meeting with Dr. Lay and Dr. Kerr to come back to the board with a recommendation of where we stand with curriculum and how curriculum will be presented to the board, so that we as a board are aware of what's happening curriculum-wise across the district. Okay? Are the rest of the board members okay with that? We, good?
I would just think, want to make sure they would give Dr. Perrin and Dr. Lay enough time to pull together their ideas.
Right.
And I'm kind of, that occurred, was it March, maybe April?
Maybe April, she has some people, like a draft.
Just to give them time to add that, you're already on this, maybe your responsibility makes a thing happen.
I wouldn't have an expectation of the next board meeting, so
Not really, no.
This would be a
That wouldn't be done by then.
No.
Not promised.
I would even suggest to Dr. Perrin and Dr. Lay, please reach out to us when you are prepared to meet.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Anything else? Reminder that we have an executive session dealing with personnel following this meeting.
I turn the bright beard, can you take them by?
But first, we will have our picture taken after we adjourn. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February fourth, seven o'clock, same room. Anything else? We stand adjourned.